Good evening. I'm Al Clark, and I'm President Pro Tem. As Mayor Beamish is not available to attend the meeting and sign any legislation that may be enacted by council this evening, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Council President Baker is acting mayor this evening, and as President Pro Tem, it is my responsibility to preside at the council meeting. So, welcome to the October 5th Meeting of Troy City Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of this meeting, and we will begin with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand by your heads. Eternal Father, bless our city and all who live, visit, and work here. Please extend your guidance and protection to our national and local leaders. Please give us wisdom and strength to make the best decisions for the greater good. Bless our armed forces and all those who volunteer in our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Swizer?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Before we get into a summary of the minutes, we have a presentation from the Troy Senior Citizens Association. They would come forward.
Hi, I'm Tia Mark from the Troy Senior Citizen Center, and we just wanted to bring you a little bit of appreciation. It's just little individually packaged cookies, so please, everyone, take one on your way home, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you do, and as a member of Troy Senior Citizens, I will doubly enjoy these cookies.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the September 21st Meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, September 21, 2015. Committee reports, Law and Ordinance Committee recommended that ordinance number O-28, 2015, a rezoning be adopted. Committee recommends legislation be prepared approving the vacation of a storm sewer easement along Corporate Drive that has not been needed. Ordinance number O-28, 2015, a rezoning was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-34, 2015, vacating and easement was given first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:15 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, I don't know who made the second.
Mr. Swizer did.
Yes.
I heard Mr. Swizer, so.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. We have committee reports now, and the Community and Economic Development Committee has two reports this evening. Mr. Twist?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I should call you that.
Thank you.
Yes, we have two reports. The first one is related to the dedication of right-of-way of 2.51 acres of an existing in Lot 6898. This is along the east side of Experiment Farm Road, just south of 1501 Experiment Farm Road. This committee met on October 1st to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the 2.451 acres of existing in Lot 6898 be accepted as right-of-way. This area is located on the east side of Experiment Farm Road and just south of 1501 Experiment Farm Road. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared accepting the dedication of 2.451 acres of existing in Lot 6898 as a right-of-way, respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swizer, and myself, his Chair, William Twist.
Do any council members have any questions? Please continue, Mr. Twist.
All right. The second one is also a dedication of right-of-way of .189 acres of In Lots 8659 and 7159, located along the south side of West Market Street and State Route 55 and the west side of Barnhart Road. The committee met on October 1st to consider the recommendations of the Troy Planning Commission that the .189 acres of existing in lots 8659 and 7159 be accepted as right-of-way. The area is located along the south side of West Market Street and State Route 55 and the west side of Barnhart Road across from the Horizon Court West. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the dedication of .189 acres of In Lots 8659 and 7159 as a right-of-way. We also support the emergency legislation that is attached where the expansion plan by the owner is not delayed, respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swizer, and myself, as William Twist, as Chair.
Do any council members have any questions on this report?
Just a clarification, Mr. Clark.
Please.
The property owner, Segna, is already there in that location?
That's right. They're looking at a building expansion.
And which, can you tell me which building that is? Is it across from the gas station, or am I in the right area?
I'm not sure. It's on the other side of the road. I mean, it's in that general area, yes.
Okay, all right. I just wondered if it was a building that's already there.
It would be south of it, yes.
Okay, that's all I hear.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Twist. Law and Ordinance Committee has a report from Chairman John Swizer.
Yes, Mr. President. Committee members Snee and Swizer met on October 1st to consider the recommendation of the Director of Law that three parcels of city-owned parcels should be annexed to the city. The parcels are identified in the detailed report. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to file petitions with the Board of Commissioners of Miami County, Ohio, for the annexation of the above three parcels, which will commence the annexation process. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mrs. Snee, and myself, as Chair.
Any council members have any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Swizer. Next is a report from the Safety and Health Committee, and Mrs. Oda.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This is a report from the Safety and Health Committee. This committee met on September 23rd to discuss the 2016 funding of the Miami County Health District. Troy's funding is based on the millage equivalent as paid by 22 of the 24 political subdivisions in the county for political health services. Troy's payment is funded from the General Fund. The 2015 Miami County Public Health funding would be $335,767.69, which is an increase of 1.51% over the 2015 funding. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the 2016 funding to the Miami County Health District for public health services for Troy citizens in the amount of $335,767.69, respectfully submitted, Mr. Clark, Mr. Heath, and myself, as Chair.
Are there any questions or comments from council on this report? Seeing none, thank you, Mrs. Oda. At this point in the meeting, we now open the meeting to citizen comments. There's a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Livingston is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address before addressing council. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. We have one resolution tonight. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 51, 2015.
Resolution number R. 51, 2015. Resolution authorized from the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Miami County General Health District for Health Services. This will be the agreement for calendar year 2016. The city will pay $335,767.69, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a move for suspension from Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Kendall. Mrs. Knight, please read the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion to adopt by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swizer. Mrs. Knight, please read the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
We will now move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to please read ordinance O-35, 2015.
Ordinance number O-35, 2015. Ordinance accepting the dedication of a right-of-way. This is a dedication of 2.451 acres along Experiment Farm Road, first reading.
Is there any discussion from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Phillips to suspend, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-36, 2015.
Ordinance number O-36, 2015. Ordinance accepting the dedication of a right-of-way and declaring an emergency. This is a dedication of 0.189 acres on the south side of State Route 55 west of Barnhart Road, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading.
Any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
Now, a motion by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mr. Twist, second it. Please read the roll, please.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-37, 2015.
Ordinance number O-37, 2015. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to petition the Board of Commissioners of Miami County, Ohio, for the annexation of real property to the City of Troy. This is for the annexation of three parcels of city-owned property, 117.2782 acres, formerly known as the Jewels Camp Farm, 4.594 acres, that was donated by Hobart Brothers ITW, and a 0.283 acre tract that had been donated by Dr. Jason Johnson. This is the first reading.
Is there any discussion from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Kendall, seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-37, 2015.
Ordinance number O-37, 2015. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to petition the Board of Commissioners of Miami County, Ohio, for the annexation of real property to the City of Troy. This is for the annexation of three parcels of city-owned property, 117.2782 acres, formerly known as the Jewels Camp Farm, 4.594 acres, that was donated by Hobart Brothers ITW, and a 0.283 acre tract that had been donated by Dr. Jason Johnson. This is the first reading.
Is there any discussion from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Kendall, seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion to adopt by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swizer. Mrs. Knight, please read the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-37, 2015.
Ordinance number O-37, 2015. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to petition the Board of Commissioners of Miami County, Ohio, for the annexation of real property to the City of Troy. This is for the annexation of three parcels of city-owned property, 117.2782 acres, formerly known as the Jewels Camp Farm, 4.594 acres, that was donated by Hobart Brothers ITW, and a 0.283 acre tract that had been donated by Dr. Jason Johnson. This is the first reading.
Is there any discussion from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Kendall, seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kendall to adopt, seconded by Mr. Swizer. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-36, 2015.
Ordinance number O-36, 2015. Ordinance accepting the dedication of a right-of-way and declaring an emergency. This is a dedication of 0.189 acres on the south side of State Route 55 west of Barnhart Road, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading.
Any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
Now, a motion by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mr. Twist, second it. Please read the roll, please.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-37, 2015.
Ordinance number O-37, 2015. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to petition the Board of Commissioners of Miami County, Ohio, for the annexation of real property to the City of Troy. This is for the annexation of three parcels of city-owned property, 117.2782 acres, formerly known as the Jewels Camp Farm, 4.594 acres, that was donated by Hobart Brothers ITW, and a 0.283 acre tract that had been donated by Dr. Jason Johnson. This is the first reading.
Is there any discussion from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Kendall, seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-36, 2015.
I know several members of staff I communicate with fairly regularly, so, you know, I'd be happy to help any way I can.
Thank you very much, Scott. It's always good to see your presence here on a regular basis, and it's good to know that you take back to DPNL our concerns. Thank you very much for being here.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anyone else care to address council? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Lieutenant Connor, 1210 South Clay Street. I asked Ms. Baker tonight because I had a concern with the recycling, and anybody that has an alleyway, I asked her, I said, now will our trash go out to the street too, or will they pick our trash up in the alley? And she told me it would have to go out into the street also to be picked up by our city trash people. So I hope that somebody will put that into the paper to let people know, because from this end of town down, there's a lot of alleys, and there was never mentioned of how it was going to be picked up. So if the people were leaving their, you know, like I was going to leave mine back there in the alley, and it, but it's not going to be picked up, there's going to be a lot of people saying, oh my God, what happened there? So hopefully somebody will put it in the paper that your trash has to go out with the recycling in the middle of the street or into the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Penny Rife. I live at 580 Stockton Commons Drive, Apartment 84. We all live there.
Hi, my name is Katie Goodrich. Some of you I recognize from cutting here and my parents' neighbors.
We live at Buckeye Community Apartments. We haven't had a manager, onsite manager, for probably a year and a half just to collect rent. Our DPNL is included in our rent, and it's been shut off three times.
Also our water.
Our water. We don't know who to call, we don't know where to go. There's like five people that moved out this week because we don't, we don't know what to do. Last Friday, I came home, all our water was off, and I went to the health department, and they came out and turned it back on, but I guess he, the guy that owns it, anyway, a lady came today and said, they're turning off your DPNL today between 5:00 and 7:00 because he's like six months behind, and so we don't, we don't know what to do. We're just out there at Buckeye Community Apartments, and we don't know what to do.
Last Thursday, my son was standing outside of our complex, and DPNL came, gave my son Lido Holdings disconnect notice, and they shut off my DPNL. The only, the only apartment was shut off because my son was physically there. DPNL's response was, I'm sorry, your son was the only one we saw, your landlord is numerous months behind in his rent or in his payments. And I said, okay, I said, what can I do to rectify this situation? I have two children under the age of three in my house. My son, you know, he has asthma, and DPNL doesn't care. Their, their answer to my question was, well, you can put it in your name. That's great, I will put the DPNL in my name for my townhome because they're all on separate meters. Well, then I was told, no, you can't do that because you've lived there under someone else's bill for the past year. Doesn't matter if your DPNL and your water is included in your rent, which it states in our lease when we moved in. They can shut it off, and if you want it turned back on, that person that owns the building has to be caught up or you have to pay his back bill. And even if I would have paid his back bill, they told me I was unable to turn the DPNL on in my name because I don't have the correct authorization from the owner. I'm sorry, I pay almost $700 a month. We've had issues with trash. You know, Tom, nice man here, is a customer of ours where I work at, he tried taking care of the problem. I don't know how far he got, but it really didn't get taken care of. We've had termite problems, bed bug problems, not in my unit, but in some of the people moving out, and utilities getting shut off. For most of us, a lot of these families out here are on metropolitan housing, they're on social security, they're single parents with children. I have a family of six, I have a sick husband with liver failure, and I have four children in my house, and I am the only one working. I need my $486 paycheck every two weeks. I lived there because it was affordable, and I don't know what the rest of us are supposed to do because there is no Red Cross to help house us anymore, they got rid of that. You know, what are we supposed to do? I just went and spent $242 yesterday to buy groceries in my freezer. How am I supposed to take care of my family? I had to spend $50 last Thursday, or Wednesday night, Thursday morning, to skate in a really crappy hotel called the Motel Six in Troy, Ohio. It was disgusting. How, how am I supposed to pay my deposit in my first month's rent when this person's been collecting almost $700 a month for the past 15 months from me? I would like to know where all of our money has gone. I think something needs to be done. I don't know what city council can do, but you're going to have about 200 homeless families come 5:00 tomorrow, or there'll be one of the biggest bonfires ever in the City of Troy.
Metro refuses to pay our Metro now because things like my toilet, I've needed a plumber for probably three weeks now, my toilet doesn't work, and there's no one, I mean, we haven't had a maintenance man for eight months.
They haven't paid that bill in Troy plumbing either.
And I, I mowed the grass out there all summer.
Me too.
And he was supposed to pay me, and I never paid, so it's just, it's, we don't know what to do, so he thought we'd come here.
If you would share your names and addresses with Mrs. Knight, Mr. Titterington, can you address that, or have Scott Frank address that?
Yes, I can, I can talk to Scott after. I know that, I guess, two weeks ago, we were dealing with a similar issue where the water and sewer, the utility bill in the city had gone unpaid for at least five out of the six or four out of the five units, and, and do the state law, and I know a lot of this is the same issue with, with DPNL, who is regulated by Public Utilities of Ohio, PUCO. There are only certain things that we can and can't do, but there are, I'm not an attorney, I'm not giving attorney advice, but I do know that there are avenues that if, if they talk as a group to an attorney, that there are some ways to, to possibly encourage the, my understanding is, the landlord that is out of town, actually out of state.
His name is Chase Lanningham.
Okay. He's, our understanding, the one that we were having concerns about was out of state, and, and what we did was, we took a leap of faith in our case, got the tracking number of the check that was in the mail from the, the payroll office of this gentleman's company, and did, did in fact turn the water back on. I didn't hear anything else about it, so I'm assuming that we got the bill, otherwise I would have heard about it. And so in our case, we were able to resolve that at least for this month. It's been an ongoing problem, apparently because that landlord is out of state and there's something going on with their billing, I don't, you know, I don't know what that is, I just know that there are some avenues that legally, as tenants and landlords, there are ways of, of mediating that. We, we can do what we can help with. I'm sure Scott's got some other avenues because they're PUCO and we're state and local ordinance regulated, but certainly we'll follow up and see what we can do.
Thank you very much. Ladies, after the meeting, if you'll please share your name and address and phone number with Mrs. Knight, and then I'm sure Mr. Frank will be able to go ahead and get that also, and.
So should we expect to stay in a hotel, or, or, I mean, this is the thing, as tenants in the state of Ohio, we don't really have any rights.
I can't.
It's all in the landlord's, you know, ballpark.
Give, give Mr. Livingston a chance to answer you.
Really, the city's law director doesn't involve in this particular problem. You really need to get your own lawyer.
So we have to come out of pocket and pay for an attorney? I mean, you know, I don't have the money. Do you have the money? Do you have the money?
No, but what you're saying is the City of Troy is not, I mean, that's.
I, I understand that, but my concern is you're going to have a whole bunch of your people in your town, your voters, that are going to be homeless, that have small children, newborn babies, elderly people. It's just not me.
We, we understand that, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to coordinate efforts between whatever we can do as a city and Mr. Frank with DPNL, and then after the meeting, you might want to sit and discuss that with Mr. Frank and, and Mr. Titterington. And then, you know, I, well, I can't resolve it right this minute, but if you give your names and addresses and phone numbers to Mrs. Knight after the meeting, okay? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council on anything?
Mr. President, I move that.
Mr. Twist.
I move that council recesses into executive session for discussion of preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Mr. Twist has made a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Phillips has seconded the motion. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.